Hello, if you see someone over here, I'm also one of you there. And I'm like, oh, we're there.
Is he over here?
Oh, yeah, I guess we'll scoot over to over here.
All right, it is 4:04 PM. I'm Joey Edwards and I call the February 24th meeting of the Lake County Planning Commission to Order. Roll call this evening. Did Heather Lynn join us?
I don't see her yet.
Yeah. Joey Edwards here. Steve Stevens was absent tonight. Dave Clark-Barrow?
Here.
Jason Marufalo?
Here.
Ryan Hill?
I am here.
And David Jurich?
Here.
Very good. Roll call of Lake County Commissioners. Elsa Thork?
Here.
Andrew Lee? Is here online. And Matt Bullock?
I'm here. Sorry.
No worries.
Here.
Very good. All right, any changes or additions to tonight's agenda? If no changes, can I get a quick motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I mean, to approve minutes of the agenda?
And a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If everyone's had a chance to approve the meetings for the February 10th meeting, any changes to, sorry, the minutes of the February 10th meeting? And if there are no changes to be made, can I get a motion to approve the minutes for the February 10th meeting?
Move.
Good. And a second, please? Anybody?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. And updates from staff, please.
Thank you so much. So, one of the first things that I want to mention tonight, on your agenda, you have three items, two public hearings and public hearing for legislative process. So, we are ready to present. CCL will be presenting on item one for the public hearing. Item two and three, when we get to those specific items, we'll provide just a little bit of clarification on them. But both of those, we will be asking for a motion to table and we will give you some guidance on each one. So, the public hearings on item Agenda two and three, we will be providing some guidance respective to each one of them when we get to them on the agenda about what type of motion we'll be seeking from the Planning Commission for those topics. The other item that I want to bring to your attention is that we, March 10th, will have what we're calling Affordable Housing 101. Michael Yerwen, who is our Affordable Housing Consultant, will be doing a training for the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners on the very complex discussion of capital stacking and basically how funding occurs for affordable housing projects. So, this is a really beneficial training and we're hoping we'll have all hands on deck. We'll also need you all there because it will also be a public hearing date as well. So, our next upcoming meeting of March 10th has a good amount of depth to it. We'll be having a public hearing on a legislative process as well as a great opportunity for learning on development and related to affordable housing and different programs and ways that those are brought to fruition. So, it'll be kind of an in-depth opportunity for a lot of Q and A. Michael will be here as our subject matter expert to answer questions. Staff is also meeting with Department of Housing this Friday to talk about some of the different opportunities for funding, even though we are in kind of an unknown federal and state landscape right now around funding. We still want to learn more about the different programs that are assisting communities throughout the state on how to bring housing opportunities to fruition for their communities. So, really important meeting on March 10th. So, we're hoping that everyone can be present and a really great opportunity to ask any questions that you have of our housing consultants. So, really looking forward to that. We have a number of items too, and I'm trying to kind of find the best opportunity on an upcoming meeting to discuss some. As we begin administering the code in some new areas like backcountry, we do have some questions that we'd like to bring in and kind of talk to you as we're looking at kind of potentially some trends changing in the types of alternative infrastructure that's been used in the backcountry that we may not have considered within the code. So, that is an area of discussion that we'd like to have. There's also some ideas around making the application that you're getting here tonight something that is administratively reviewed per standards and not require a conditional use permit. Again, as we are trying to further the goals of the needs that came out of our housing needs assessment, we really want to be mindful of how do we create housing opportunities in probably the most fluid way for our community. And this is a trend, it's referred to as zoning reform in planning circles and with the EMPA and the DORA, or excuse me, EDOLA, around ways that we can maybe effectively have a positive impact on housing opportunities to meet our community needs. So, we will be trying to carve out an opportunity to just have a real thoughtful work session and get some feedback from you all on some issues that are pending within the Planning Department. So, probably leaning towards that second meeting in March to do that is what I'm thinking, seeing as how our agenda is starting to look a little bit fuller for that first meeting. We continue to have incoming applications. And I will just defer to other members of the Planning Department if you've got any specific updates that you'd like to get around any of those.
Well, we have a site plan review for solar, for a solar system that will be coming. I think we had, we're thinking March 24th for that. So, that's the other land use application on the March, March meeting docket. And in terms of short-term rentals, we're pretty steady, staying at around 15 available licenses. So, still, still kind of surprised that those haven't filled up, but even with, even with an enforcement or Dawn, Dawn doing kind of an enforcement check on Airbnb and the listing platforms, we're not finding a ton that are listing without licenses. So, pretty happy with that.
Yeah, and XL Energy that has a site here in town of Mountain View Drive, they're looking at a site plan that's going to come forward to you, Planning Commission, before long, they're just looking at sort of swapping where the building is on that site, but really kind of improving it, building a new facility.
Redeveloping that existing site?
Yeah, yeah. Really not increasing like personnel or anything, but improving work environment and sort of functionality, operations of that facility.
Something that isn't just a warehouse.
Yeah, exactly. So, and then the other one is the Box Creek Mining Application that CUP will make some progress. We're not quite ready to schedule it, but it's coming along. So, we'll be seeing that before long.
And that reminds me too, that we are working on an application that we have titled 515.
Mountain 515.
Mountain 515. And, and this will be a PUD without subdivision. And we have a Spanish-speaking applicant, so we will have translation during that public hearing to ensure that we have good communication through the hearing process that evening. And, but we continue to be working with utility providers on that, and this is specific to the manufactured home community on the east side of, let's go right kind of on the periphery of the city limits and unincorporated Lake County adjacent to the industrial mining zone district. So, that will be coming forward as well. And that's been a very complicated application and has taken a degree of review with staff before it'll be ready for presentation. We will ensure that we've got good communication for that public hearing. And I think that kind of rounds out some of the MEBIT concerns.
And still working on hiring a GIS technician.
We have sent out a request to the county manager for approval and we will be hopefully making a, an offer either this week or next.
Do we lose our young GIS technician? Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, we did. But after a series of interviews, the Hiring Committee unanimously had a top choice. And so, we have sent that into HR and we are hoping to have that position filled shortly. Excited to be able to share all the details once we've got a little more traction on it.
And we are going to table Timber Ranch Rezone and the Sign Code Amendment tonight. Do you know when we're going to revisit those?
Well, how about we talk about that when we get to those agenda items if that would, if that might help a little bit?
Of course, yeah.
And then we'll need to appoint Dave Jurich and Ryan Hill as voting members tonight. You have a quorum already, I believe. You have Jason, David, and Joey as regular members in the file. So, it's at your discretion.
We certainly can, so I don't know what that process is.
Just put it on the record that you're going to have Ryan and David. You might ask them both if they're prepared to vote on the file to CP before you appoint them, to just make sure that they've had adequate time to review the materials because they may or may not be prepared to vote.
Sure. Ryan and David, David, of course, is here. Are you guys, have you had a chance to review this file? And are you willing to vote as, as voting members this evening in tonight's hearing?
Yes.
Yes, I've read the material. I'm prepared.
Very good. Any concerns with that? Anybody online?
No.
Then we will move forward with five voting members tonight. That's great. Thank you. All right. Any old business? Then on to new business. You want me to start the public hearing?
Yeah, you can, you can read the file or announce the file and then you can read the opening.
And we're only opening it for the first file tonight, right?
Correct. We're opening the first file.
All right, File 2445 for 160 Peak View Drive, Accessory Dwelling Unit Conditional Use Permit. I am Vice Chair Edwards. The Lake County Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners will now conduct a joint public hearing. This statement I'm reading shall be incorporated into and made a part of the record on these proceedings. The Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners have jurisdiction to conduct a joint public hearing on a conditional use permit application under Section 3.6.1 of the Lake County Land Development Code. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the conditional use permit application should be approved. In considering this manner, the Commission will address the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.6.1F of the Lake County Land Development Code. The procedure followed in this hearing will be as follows. First, members of the Commission and the Board will disclose any ex parte communications. Second, the county staff will make an initial presentation. Third, the applicant may then make their presentation. Fourth, after that, any other persons either supporting or opposing the application may present evidence. Fifth, supporting and opposing witnesses may be questioned by the Commission and the Board. Once questioning is concluded, no further questioning is permitted unless granted by the Chair. And last, the applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. The parties and witnesses are asked not to submit redundant, irrelevant, or cumulative evidence. If someone has already made the point you wish to make, please simply say so. The Chair will also require that all comments be made to the Planning Commission and the Board and that there be no dialogue between the applicant and members of the audience directly. At the conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, the Chair will entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and the Commission will discuss and weigh evidence. Then, there will be a motion to close the discussion phase of the joint public hearing. The Board and County, the Board of County Commissioners will then retire from the meeting and the Chair and Planning Commission will entertain a motion on the application. The motion may take the form of one of the following recommendations. First, to approve the application with no conditions. Second, to approve the application with recommended conditions. Third, to approve the application with newly identified conditions or to deny the application. The Planning Director shall make record of any substantial discussion on the motion and include that in the record with the recommendation of the Commission. The Commission's recommendation will be in the form of a statement of motion. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the Commission or to the form and substance of these proceedings? Hearing none, I'll now ask that each Planning Commissioner member and then each County Commissioner, if you have any ex parte communications to disclose, and if so, please disclose them now. Heather Lynn did not join us online, correct? Joey Edwards, none. Steve Stevens is absent. Dave Clark-Barrow?
None.
Jason Marufalo?
None.
Ryan Hill?
None.
And David Jurich?
None.
Very good. The county staff may make its initial presentation. Oh, thank you. County Commissioners, Elsa Thork, any ex parte?
None.
Andrew Lee?
None.
And Matt Bullock? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. So, this is a conditional use permit application for an accessory dwelling unit located within the Panarque subdivision. The applicants are proposing a one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit on the first floor of the single-family home to be utilized as a long-term rental. And a conditional use permit is required in the recreational zoning district when the, for ADU, when the parcel is one acre or less. And so, again, they are proposing to utilize this ADU as a long-term rental. We did refer this application out and we received a response from Mount Albert Water Association, Paul Terranova, the General Manager. And he reiterated what the applicants have provided in their application that a second water certificate, curb stop, water top, and water meter will be required for the ADU residence. And so, the, the applicants are well aware of that and will comply with what is required per NEWA. We, we published this and the notice was posted on the property and the notice was also sent to adjacent property owners. And staff did not receive any, any feedback from, from anyone. So, moving on to the approval criteria, the applicants did point out consistency with the comprehensive plan, specifically Goal 2.14, which states, which is to promote the development of diversity of housing types, providing for residents with different economic and housing needs, giving Lake County employees the opportunity to live affordably close to where they work. And staff would also like to point out consistent, consistency with the 2024 Lake County Housing Needs Assessment. There was an epistas on the need for long-term rentals within Housing Needs Assessment. And I just pulled a quote out from the Housing Needs Assessment, so increasing the stability of the renter market or the, the Housing Needs Assessment notes that long-term rentals could increase the stability of the renter market and ensure long-term rental availability, and that could significantly improve workforce retention and local economic growth. So, wanted to point that, point that out as well. And really, staff felt that the applicants did meet the other approval criteria of a conditional use permit as well as they recognized and demonstrated compliance with the standards associated with an accessory dwelling unit or 5.3.1B. So, that is really, oh, there's one more thing. The applicants did let me know today that they purchased the lot that is adjacent to, to this lot. And so, their site plan may change. However, the combined, they'll go through the lot consolidation process, but the combined acreage will still be less than one acre. And so, a conditional use permit would still be required for an ADU so that the block consolidation, that wouldn't affect their need to apply for a CUP. And so, if approved tonight, that CUP would apply to both lots. But I think that's really all I have tonight. So.
That's pretty straightforward.
Any questions for staff?
Anyone online have any questions for staff?
Not at this time.
Nope. Thank you.
Very good.
Yep, and the applicants are here tonight. And so, I'd like to ask if they have anything to add. Did you sign up?
Not really. I mean, you kind of said it all in your thing there. And I think, you know, it's utilizing an area of the house that would probably just get piled with junk, you know, so, somebody living there, so.
If we could do more, I mean, build some big house, that'd be great, but we're just one house. So, we'll do the best we can.
And I didn't see a site plan or anything. There wasn't anything attached.
There was, they did include a site.
Okay. I can see it. Okay.
And the ADU is, they're proposing it to be attached to the garage.
Right.
So, that would be the first level. And then, there's a second story and also a loft, correct?
Yeah. And there would be, we'd have like a designated parking spot. It'd be 40 persons would be living in it directly.
And there's no connection between the two units either.
Separate entrance from the outside.
That's pretty straightforward. Very good. Questions? Any questions for the applicants?
I don't have any questions, and I usually do, so.
Come on, Daisy. I give something.
Very good. Forgive me, I don't do the hearings myself very often, so let me see where we stand there.
You might want to go ahead and open your public hearing for any further comment from anyone else. And if you have a little longer comment, you would, we either close it, go ahead and open that up to the public.
All right, at this point, we will open up the hearing to any comment by members of the public, either in person or online. Anyone online who'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand. No public comment seen.
Just going to grab the clipboard real quick.
Yep.
And it just looks like the applicant signed it.
Just us checking. Very good. At this point, I would entertain a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
I so moved, yes.
A second, please?
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is closed.
Chair, Vice Chair, you have the option now of going ahead and asking the Board of County Commissioners to step away for a moment if you want to go into deliberation, or you can address the other things on your agenda and wait till the end and go into making a motion and deliberation on the side. So, at your discretion.
Any comment, any comment at all from the Commissioners?
It doesn't matter to me.
I have a comment.
Thank you.
Some things. Helps you guys out. Are you second? Are you full-time residents or? Well, at some point, we will be, yeah. We kind of got the ball rolling because we're worried about not getting a water certification, so.
Smart.
Five years ahead of schedule.
That's good.
Maybe you can have this ridged or shovel the driveway. A little bit of snow that's there now, I don't know if you want to shovel that.
It's getting a little old and rotten right now. All right, should we go ahead and move on and table these other two files? And then ask the Commissioners to leave, or does it matter how we do that?
Well, the Sign Code, we're going to want to spend some time with the Board on that. So, it really depended on what the Commissioners, if they let us step out for a minute, you can make a motion and then we'll just have Andrew, we can send Commissioner Elsa, Commissioner Bullock, and say officially a text when we rejoin. It probably will only take a couple moments, Commissioner Lee, and then we'll reconvene. So, we'll let the other two Commissioners venture down to their offices and then we'll send you a, we'll send you a text, Commissioner Lee, as soon as we reconvene.
All right, we have closed the evidentiary portion of the hearing and we have closed the discussion phase of the joint public hearing. Any questions or comments among the Commissioners on this file? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
So, we have three options?
Correct.
And the staff is recommending approval with conditions? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to read all of this.
Yeah.
I move that the Planning Commission recommend conditional approval to the Board of County Commissioners of File Number 24-45, Conditional Use Permit Application for an Accessory Dwelling Unit on a parcel of land less than one acre at 160 Peak View Drive, Glen Lakes, Colorado 81251, pursuant to the standards of Section 5.3.1B. The Planning Commission further finds that the approval criteria pursuant to Section 3.6.1F have been met as evidenced in the staff report dated February 24th, 2025, for File Number 24-45. The condition of approval is, one, all statements made by the applicant in the application in hearing shall be considered conditions of approval.
All right. Heather Lynn is absent. Steve Stevens is absent. Dave Clark-Barrow? Oh, forgive me. Second, please.
Seconded.
The motion.
All right, Marufalo seconds. Now, we'll go through roll call. Dave Clark-Barrow?
So, I'm giving you a yea or nay vote here? Is that correct?
Lay on a approval with conditions.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Jason Marufalo?
Yay.
Thank you. Ryan Hill?
Yay.
David Jurich? And Joey Edwards, aye, or yay. All right, the motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you for adding a little more rental stock to our community.
And I do just want to add, so the Board of County Commissioners actually made the final decision on this file. And I think all of the planning staff is out next week when we would put this on their agenda. So, it will be on March 18th that, that they'll make their final decision. And so, I'll send you details about that meeting. You don't need to attend in person, but if you want to join on Zoom.
Okay. The only other question I have is, assuming they approve it, how long till we get our building permit?
Are you submitted? Yeah.
Yeah, we've got, everything has gone through the channels, I believe.
I think we're on hold because of this.
Oh, okay. Then, immediately if everything else looks good, if you're building permit.
Okay. And if I redo the site plan?
is that gonna hang everything up, or?
Oh, if you change it.
Okay.
Well, if your subject system, you know, your site plan is probably designed around your subject system, correct?
Sort of. We have, what I wanna do is move the house fifteen feet away from the property line, fifteen more feet away from the property line.
So you're not gonna be able to do that until you re-apply your lot. So if you're doing a consolidation and you purchased it, then you're gonna have to vacate that landline before you can change your site plan.
The house would still meet the requirements.
Okay.
Would still be on the same lot, everything we're doing, basically, other than a driveway extension, will be on the existing lot.
As long as you're not having to use any of that other lot area to accommodate, you know, that you're, as long as you can maintain your setbacks within the one lot, then you should be able to proceed if you're gonna consolidate and vacate that property line at some point, that's fine. But if you're not doing that in order to do your site planning, then you should be okay. But we'll look at that in your zoning review of your building permit. So if you're not gonna change it, if you're gonna revise your site planning, you need to get that in right away, so.
I was going next week, or this week, sorry, next week, quickly. Quickly? That'll be next week.
So we'll look at your site plan, but if you can continue every, read all your setbacks and do everything within one lot, then you can continue.
And then consolidating the lots, that's a long process, is it?
The biggest part of that is the survey. So new survey has to be created that creates, vacates the lot line and creates just a singular parcel out of the two lots. So that, it's usually the survey time. C C does those, she can, it's an administrative process, it should give up you through the administrative process of that. For public hearings, nothing like that, so it's just the administrative process.
Okay. Well, great, we'll get to your meeting, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
The reason is in number two, I mean, I passed that we switched the order, I don't know what's number two.
The reason is number two.
The reason is.
Perfect.
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you.
All right, do it.
Okay, so file twenty-five oh two, I believe is the file number.
Yes, twenty-five oh two, Timber Ranch.
Timber Ranch Resuming, so staff is asking for a motion to table until March twenty-fourth. A zoning control document that is the document that is created as part of the planned unit development, which creates zoning for the newly created planned unit development. There were a couple details missing from that zoning control document when we went in and started doing the review that said they'd be furnished at preliminary, but the specifics of which haven't been furnished yet to staff. So I reached out to Nick Costello, he's getting us that information, but just so that we have enough information, time to get the information and digest it and make sure that we can report for the rezoning application, we just need a little additional time. So we're asking for March twenty-fourth. We have the generalized document, but preliminary, we really need to get into much more specific information. So we need a few more pieces of that.
And we don't need to open a public hearing to table it, we just need to make a motion.
We need to just make a motion to continue the hearing until March twenty-fourth.
Number two there, you wanna have the numbers.
Do a date certain, so we don't have to re-notice the file.
All right, we would entertain a motion to postpone the public hearing until March twenty-third.
I move to postpone the public hearing until March twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth?
Yes. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Very good. Does this need to be a roll call, or can it be an aye vote?
What would you prefer?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? The motion passes. And on to sign code.
Um, you'll share? You'll share on the Zoom screen first, so go back up, and then green button.
All right, now this two was noticed till today. So.
Sure, I'm glad you showed up in person.
As you might remember, the moratorium expires on March nineteenth. And so we are recommending that the application, really to adopt the sign code, be also postponed to March tenth. So we're gonna talk a little bit more about the sign code tonight. And when you see it on March tenth, we should be at a final version. So the request is to continue to March tenth.
Do we wanna go ahead and make the motion to continue it, or do we wanna hear your presentation first? What would you prefer? Is there a presentation to be heard tonight?
There is, yeah, why don't we go ahead and continue it first?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, everybody online, I'm sure you heard, we are asking for a motion to continue file number twenty-four dash thirty-nine, the Sign Code Amendment, until our March tenth meeting. Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I move to continue. File number twenty-four dash thirty-nine to March, to March tenth meeting.
All right, if everybody heard that, could I get a second, please?
I second the motion.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've continued file number twenty-four dash thirty-nine to March tenth. Please take it away.
All right, well, I appreciate your patience with us as we're kind of working through a lot of details. So this does give us a little bit more opportunity to come back to our discussion last week, which had to do with these three items, as you, I'm sure, remember. I sent you a draft on Friday, and it has a lot more red lines than just these three items. I've had some additional review by somebody who's kind of an expert in sign code, so there's a fair amount of legal documentation that we need to have. So, but generally, these are the three items that you'll see. So in terms of the electronic message boards, based upon our discussion last time, I think we really talked about size, the amount of, you know, brightness or dimness that the sign needed to have, and how long it would, how long it would be still before it advanced. So this draft language looks at matching our electronic signage with our freestanding monument signs. So height and square footage are the same, but only fifty percent of that sign could be electronic. That matches some of the research we did and some what we talked about last time. We also talked about having the automatic dimmer that would happen at night to reduce sort of that glare condition. And so this describes that, and requires that control over it. It also uses that three hundred nits, which, between dawn and dusk, and that, that, you know, brightness, we talked a little bit about what nits are, which is, you know, terms that, many ways, what it does mean is it's about the brightness of our computers, that would be the equivalent of it. And it's, you know, found this number in this standard in other codes, so I believe it to be a reasonable light level at night. So we also, you know, a little more administrative, we wanna see the specifications for that so we can verify it when we receive an application. And the location would be anywhere, a monument or a pole sign would be allowed, so they would match that criteria. And then finally, the idea, it's sort of interesting, isn't it? It's like a static message that does move, so. Not entirely static, but it moves slowly, like every eight seconds. And I think that's a number that everybody agreed upon last time, and sort of maybe the slowest example that we saw. So based upon our discussion, this is the proposed language. So I'm opening it up to any discussion that might need to occur related to this. And let me also put a pin in the fact that, you know, there are codes that don't allow electronic signs. So not having electronic signs is still an option. I just wanted to kind of point that out, so.
I have a question, do you define elsewhere in the code N I T?
You know, I haven't yet, but that is a very good point, yeah.
Just so nobody.
Yeah, it's very obvious.
Goes wondering, yeah.
Yeah, I definitely have a definition, and we could add that.
Yeah, we'd originally looked at lemons, I think, so having N I Ts as a.
Yeah.
As a definitive measure would be nice.
And I think that just for administration of the code, we'll need to be able to identify what kind of equipment is needed to be able to measure that if we ever had a complaint or had a compliance issue. So how do we determine, certainly, we were required as a specification from the manufacturer for new, but if we ever had an enforcement issue, we just have to be able to have a measure by which we could do a code enforcement.
That would be nice, I was just in a dinner in an older part of town, and there were several very small businesses, like, I think, used tire shops, that had brought in signage, it was just incredibly bright, but it was obvious that it wasn't done by a big sign company, this was really small scale stuff, so. Finding somebody who gets something secondhand or gets it not from a big sign company, we definitely need to be able to measure it, because some of that stuff, even though it's quite small, can be incredibly bright.
There's probably an A S T M standard somewhere, you know, so many feet away, and handheld device out there.
Usually there's, there's, there just needs to be a correct.
Have you had any, have you had any responses about removing the electronic messaging boards? Just.
Removing them from the code?
Yeah, just making them not, not possible, is, have you had any feedback, bad direction?
Well, last week's discussion, or last two weeks ago, I would say that, you know, Commissioner Lind was not a fan of this idea. And so there wasn't a recommendation that came out of the Planning Commission to say, let's, let's not, you know, let's not allow that. But, I don't know, I thought it worthy of further discussion.
Well, the two or three that I think of in town that we do have have a lot of opposition to them, of course.
Like Saturdays?
Right.
Right.
And this addresses all of those kinds of, all of the things that make that sign so blatant are addressed here. So maybe that solves that problem without having to tell somebody they can't when they look down the street and say, but they do. I don't know.
Yeah, well, new, new regulations always create some non-conformities of new regulations. So.
Yeah, really thinking about the, the North Corridor there, what could come down once we get some of that new commercial. Any questions or comments from those online about electronic message boards?
None for me.
Nothing from Jason and Snow?
Yeah, no, not right now.
Okay.
Nothing from Eric.
Thank you, gentlemen, okay. I think you kind of hit it.
All right.
Okay, we'll get to that.
We're wanting to see the people here in a minute.
Yeah, let's let you go ahead and do that, and then I can hop over to participants.
All right, so the other one is drive-through signs. And so thinking about this, this could be a restaurant, it could be a bank, could be, you know, a couple of those kinds of uses. I, we've talked quite a bit about having things be architecturally compatible, and so there's a couple of these first two statements really speak to that, so that these signs do match with the rest of the building. And especially fast food is kind of notorious for maximizing their signage regardless of what the building looks like. So I think it ties it a little closer to the building. We do, or are saying that these are internally illuminated signs are allowed. So that's, you know, Taco Bell is an example of that, most, most, fast food will request this. So this is, it makes it explicit. And then screening the boards from public rights away by use of the building, you know, walls, fences, landscaping, you know, I think this is a fairly common requirement from what I've observed. And so it's a way of kind of dampening, again, the impact from off-site of this kind of use, so.
Remind us, Alyssa, how many of these drive-through signs under our spreadsheet or are, would be allowed? Because they're limited to a certain amount.
Two are, yeah, two are allowed.
So two allowed, the signage board and anything directional, is that right? Or is, or not directional, just you drive-through signs?
Yeah, two per driveline is how we have it listed.
So if we have it separate?
Two per driveline, so if you did have two drivelines, anything like that currently, but.
A lot of, that's kind of like Donald's law, right?
Right.
Okay, but just, I, this is clarification, yes, and two, maximum of two of these type.
The only thing I caught is I'd wanna make sure that number two doesn't read in such a way that somebody reads that and feels like they could double the size of that sign.
There is a dimensional standard two in the table as well.
Right.
They say that there.
So if we.
Is proportional to the size of the sign, there's also this limitation.
We can't read higher than eight feet. We can't read more than sixteen square feet.
Um, you know, that's interesting, because somewhere in this, I don't think we did.
It's on the table.
It's not in the table, no.
We need to make sure that we do that, only because I could read that and argue, but I should be able to make it twice as big. Because the base has to be something. So up to the maximum size specified.
Right.
Anybody online, you have any questions or comments on the drive-through signs, four points?
I can't, I'm not really sure. We'll get back to them, I thought it was a little more, but.
And internal illumination would be limited to three hundred nits?
Well, that's interesting, that's what we used for the electronic signs, but what would be, we would wanna look at limiting the amount of illumination for these signs as well. We have under illumination here.
I mean, internal illumination assumes that the material of the sign is opaque in some way. If it was clear plastic, you'd have the.
Well, and our, any enforcement that we do would be done using the same machine that measures the message board.
So if it's.
So maybe it makes sense to make those two the same value, I don't know.
Yeah, the, and it's interesting, because what we have proposed is a thousand lumens. And again, that's sort of a different, nits and lumens are two ways of measuring the same thing, and we probably would wanna be more consistent about that in thinking it out loud. But the three hundred was like at night, so during the day, clearly, it could be brighter. It's kind of the after hours, depending if there are after hours. So the thousand lumens was one that was pretty common in my research.
With manufacturers too, it's kind of a manufacturer standard, and code standard, yeah.
That this would be the standard, is what you're saying?
Are both places, it's a common practice.
So three hundred nits is a thousand and twenty-eight lumens, so you're almost identical right now. So there, three hundred is, is almost exactly a thousand lumens. So you're in the right ballpark there. They're not two different, two wildly different measurements. They're not two different, two wildly different measurements.
Mm-hmm. Okay. You like that? So the illumination with the sandwich boards is actually a little more restrictive, but just barely, because you've got a thousand.
Yeah, exactly across from, but a thousand lumens and three hundred nits is, you wouldn't be able to tell the difference really. Any online comments before we move on? Here none? Right ahead.
All right. And then finally, I think we're at the, um.
Well, yeah, Melissa, I wouldn't share.
So it's already been.
So it's already been shared.
Okay.
Sorry. No, sorry.
How many people did it take to get?
Well, we'll just let, let Cece know that we have.
Is this the, well, this is yours? There we are.
Thank you, Cece.
Thank you, Cece.
Sure.
You'll notice that this is a little different than what's in code. But when I put in the code, I realized when I looked at it today was a draft. And I think this is the better language. I think what we're trying to get to here with service stations because all of the other commercial signage, wall signs, which is typically what they use in our monument signs, apply to service stations. What's unique about these are the canopies. So what we talked about last time was two per canopy. That's sixteen square feet, which is, I think, a good size and based on the research. And obviously not to exceed the height of the canopy. So that's pretty straightforward. And, um, and then talking about one pricing sign per frontage, not to exceed the eight square feet. Because I think that we were talking about is probably the brightest sign and that's where we're going to see some electronic sign. No, because they changed those, which seems like a reasonable practice. I think everybody agreed with that last time, you know. So, anyway.
So the price sign can be eight feet by eight feet?
Eight square feet. So two by four? Just.
Eight square feet in area, thank you.
In area.
And eight feet tall. Okay, thank you.
In height, yeah. Which is the height of a monument sign. So.
We also talked about the canopies not being lit.
Yeah, we did. Yeah. So I haven't put any language in related to that. If they have, and maybe internally lit was one of the conversational cases, right? Would there be lighting that, you know, is attached to the outside of the sign and lights the, the language, or maybe they're just dark? So.
I think, I recall the conversation being that since there's already a monument sign, like a lit, cast monument sign, that it would be inconsistent if we're going to allow signs on the canopy. Be inconsistent with other industries and with dark sky to allow those to be lit as well. Is what I recall.
I, you're right. I remember that as well.
And then just the thought that, you know, you've got light, those are lit areas anyway underneath. Underneath providing for user access, but.
So now, yeah, we're deciding that I'm right.
We are. Yeah, we are. Yeah, so we, if there's agreement in that with that, we could eliminate signs on the canopy.
We said that they could be lit, we, they said that there could be signs, but not lit.
Not lit.
Is what we talked about last time.
It needs some branding. Tell me if, how about that branding?
Do you branding band around, yeah?
That you would see during the day, so that at night, yeah.
It's in their fashion.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, great for bringing that back up. So maybe that, Commissioners, is the conversation. Should we restrict canopies from being lit?
On their fashion.
On their fashion. So they obviously have light underneath so people can read the, the field poems itself.
And all of these things, everything is specified to be required to be dark sky compliant in our sign code now. So that would also include service station canopies.
Yeah, which is really important.
Well, and it absolutely is.
Don't hang down, because that's really what creates so much of the glare.
So that solves some of that argument right off the bat, but. That is something we're going to see, we'll see several stations redevelop and have to go back through the sign ordinance again over the next few years. And then we'll certainly see another one or two service stations come up on, at least on the north side as well. So this is something that we really kind of want to get right.
Yeah, the canopy itself kind of adds that shielded opportunity. Just doesn't, doesn't. And I, I think from an administrative standpoint, we wouldn't have any problem denying a canopy that didn't provide that shielding. If they came in with a development, a building permit for something, that they would be easily, from, based on our code, to determine that that is not dark sky compliant.
Right.
We would have enough to address any of those kind of canopies that were designed in that manner, our system that could.
Questions or comments? I don't know why, there was one gas station, I was in Texas last week, and there was one gas station, a newer gas station in. And I guess I'm used to the canopies being lit all the way around. And they didn't have that, but they ran the lid of the cover over the service area up to about thirty feet. It was phenomenally high. And then all the lighting is directly down from that. But it was black on top. And so instead of having a lit canopy, they literally raised that deck up to, it was, why in the world would you do that for buses or mobile homes? But it was probably thirty feet up, it was probably fifteen feet higher than the top of the seven eleven or whatever it was attached to. Incredibly brightly lit, but all the light was straight down. It was bright, but I don't know why it really stuck out to me because I hadn't seen that before. And maybe that was done to. Right. But maybe that was done to get around having that lit canopy because the entire front of that store was lit because of that big canopy over the service station area, the gas pumps area. It was an interesting thing, and it was a brand-new station, but it really stood out. It was, it was, it was impressive to see. It was bright, but it was all downlighting. And probably would have met dark sky compliant statues.
Wasn't Buc-E's? Did you see Buc-E's?
No, no, it wasn't, it wasn't that much. It was, it was very close to DFW Airport, but.
Yeah, that looks like.
Not a great big station, maybe, maybe twelve pumps or so.
I think Jason had.
Go ahead, Jason.
Uh, yeah, so that kind of brings up a question. There are canopies that have like accent lighting wrapped around them, like a neon bar or something of that nature. I don't know if that's something that needs to be addressed. Uh, because someone had mentioned branding, but it wasn't necessarily branding unless you would consider the color of the neon, you know, in complimenting the brand logo or whatever. And that's usually wrapped on the, the edge banding of that awning.
Well, I think what's being proposed is that there is no lighting. Wouldn't be accent lighting, wouldn't be internal lighting. It would just not be allowed, I think, is, is what is the conversation.
Yeah, no lighting on the canopy, only downlighting.
Yeah, downlighting that underneath the canopy. The canopy itself is not lit in any way.
Your canopy should shield.
That, I just wanted to clarify that.
Can I just clarify as well? I appreciate what Jason's saying. We're talking about like if we read this, the two signs per canopy.
Yeah.
Not to exceed the height of the canopy. That's like if, if this was a seven eleven and they had this cool big sign, this seven eleven, and it went up above the canopy, right? And we're saying can't do that. But we're also saying that you can't have your sign, your seven eleven sign lit on the edge of the canopy, right?
Right.
We're just saying only downlighting. And that you can have two, whatever.
Two signs, well, two per canopy, right? So if it's on a corner, you know, usually they want it on the street side, so.
So like this, a standing thing. Seven eleven and it's three fifty, right?
Yes.
That's this sign.
Yes.
So we're saying, no, thank you, lit sign. We're saying, yes, you can totally do this, but only this much of it, right?
Right.
Okay.
And no more than eight feet tall.
Yeah, that's.
Eight square feet on that side, yeah. Yeah, and then two per canopy, so you could have one on each side of it.
Right, so you have your street.
Right. No, thank you for the visual, that helps. No, I think that's great, but also as you're driving through town, it's not quite so discombobulated because sometimes the gas stations supposedly put their signs up to the maximum height.
Yeah.
Having them down as monument signs actually makes it more approachable, makes it easier to understand as you're driving through town.
It does. And, and this maybe raises the, the last thought because, you know, this is going to come back to, to be adopted. Our pole signs. And as I think about our pole signs, that, that would be the workaround on this. We allow up to twelve feet. And so, you know, as I.
But a pole sign can only be one sign per.
Yeah, per business.
Per business.
But you get a monument sign and a pole sign.
And could you have a pole sign and then still get your two monument signs, one per?
Street frontage, yeah. I think, yeah, you can have a pole sign.
I'm just trying to think about what the workarounds are going to be. So if we have two islands, that means two monument signs and then a pole sign.
Right.
Out on the street, which we've still severely limited in height.
Yeah. Well, the, yeah, the pole signs are, they're twelve, one per street frontage, and the monument signs are one per street frontage. So.
Well, in our, our canopy signs here, we can get one on each side
Yeah.
of each canopy unless a service gas station has two canopies, one on either side of the center.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
Right.
Do we need to restrict the total number of signs per?
Well, I'm, what I noticed in looking at other codes that could be a lot more restrictive than ours, like Sedona, Arizona.
Well, and it's one of those that has nothing above ground level, yeah.
Aspen, Colorado, I just thought, you know, and Breckenridge.
Yeah.
They, they don't have pole signs.
At all.
Yeah.
Right.
And they don't, they're certainly not twelve feet tall. The, the, the height is like six or eight feet.
Yeah, not much more than the height of your landscape.
Yeah. So it, it's, as I've gotten maybe too obsessive about this, I've been wondering, gosh, are we, are we still allowing too much signage, even though it's cutted back?
And Commissioner Lee has a question.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, thanks. Hey, um, you know what you brought up, Joey, just made me wonder. And you guys don't have to go into detail on this, but there was something in place that will prevent someone from putting just the lights up on an exorbitantly tall pole. Did I hear anything about that? Say they just wanted just a single or double lights on a sign, but on a pole that was like thirty-something feet tall. Could they do that, or is there something in place that prevents that?
Like a parking lot light?
Yeah. Yeah, just like pointing downward on their signs to illuminate the signage.
No, I, our, our code would preclude that, but I'll let you go into what dark skies. Yeah, a dark sky compliant, could it be thirty feet tall? No, and shaking your head, you know your lighting, like, a height. The dark sky means essentially that, that, that lighting needs to be downward cast and you can't see the bulb. So, because that's where the glare is created. And so those basic principles are what apply to our lighting regulations. And one of the first things that we did in the code was lower the maximum allowable height of signage. So whereas code used to allow signs up to thirty-five feet, and there were variables in the code, and they kind of contradicted each other about limitations on height, but they, they weren't consistent. So there were some areas that restricted it to thirty feet, but overall, structures, including signs, maximum allowable height was thirty-five. So Melissa and I have been talking quite a bit, like she said, looking at more restrictive regions with examples of Breckenridge and Aspen and Sedona, which is our more regulatory partners or examples that we're going to find. Is there, I think one of the lingering questions, is twelve feet still remain too high? Is it still competing with our landscape? Is it harmonious? Is it achieving what you want to achieve? Or does eight foot come closer to meeting what our goals are with the ability to consider when topography challenges? An example is like Safeway. When you're kind of down in a hole, could there be a, a variance process that a sign could realize up to a maximum allowable of like twelve feet? But only if it could demonstrate that there's a particular difficulty with, with citing the sign. And maybe you, you know, it would be stepping out in a more regulatory sense and taking it back quite a bit if we were to say, well, you know what, eight feet or twelve feet with a pole sign might still be disruptive to the landscaping and, and, and view shed. And maybe in this day, wayfinding a little differently. And those would be your rationales.
I think that's a fantastic idea.
It's disruptive to you.
Just eliminate the pole sign entirely.
The view shed.
Monument sign, eight foot, eight feet tall. I'd even be very careful about exclusionary language, excepting when there's a, when, when there's a landscape feature that's a problem. I would be very careful about that. I would just say variances are possible with a review.
But you might want to put some limitations on that variance because Saturdays happen through a variance, right? So dimensional standards and things like that. So if you want to preserve this design, knowing that a variance could be possible, do you want to kind of put a threshold of variances up to? This height is, well, all that you would want to be an applicant to realize through the variance process.
Well, and, and limiting a variance to a maximum limit,
Yeah.
I think is, is preservative.
Yeah, I think the twelve is pretty reasonable.
Moving forward, as, it's not the right wording, but as Leadville gentrifies and, and becomes, redevelops some of our blighted areas, I think it's really important to set that standard. I would be completely in favor of eliminating pole signs entirely and having that eight-foot monument sign be kind of the set standard.
I mean, we don't, I don't know if we need to talk about gentrification. I don't think it has to do.
And, and I apologize, I shouldn't have used that.
Don't worry, just, I'll get to it. I just want to acknowledge that, like, you think about Safeway, the whole point of signs is to help people find their way, right? And when you're driving by Safeway or Target, you can tell that it's a safe way or a target. So that wayfinding isn't really necessary, but it does potentially get in the way of the view shed, right? So, and then as we also like increase our ability to find for wayfinding through technology, those signs are not as important in our view shed.
That is critical, right.
To help us find our way through an environment. So just because it's gentrified places that are kind of on the forefront of this design or coding, doesn't mean that our whole world isn't also moving in that direction where we, we are finding different ways to wayfind around our environments. And.
Yeah, that's very true.
And it's a, it's a valuable conversation to say like, oh, do we need pole signs? The only, the only difference is, is interestingly this one. It's like, that's the only industry where I can think of where we like, it's industry standard to put your pricing on a sign. Anyway, I think it's worth the conversation. Anyway, I think it's worth the conversation, but I do just wanna honor that, like, the whole point of us even being in a government conversation is to make sure that people can find their way. And I think that we find it in lots of different ways, other than signage. We're moving almost even away from signage in many ways than we do used to.
Yeah, you don't drive into town anymore looking to see what the different prices are on the gas stations. You look on your phone and you see which gas stations are available in town and where they are, I'm sure. And also, there will be height changes, I was just thinking about they are. Their sign is on the side of their building and that's twenty feet off the ground. Those, those will continue. And, and are certainly allowable, so. But yeah, I, I, I really like the way you're thinking. And I certainly wouldn't be opposed to trying to limit it.
The dominoes might be a good example, right, because they don't have a pole sign.
Right.
And I, and-
And frankly, they don't need one.
Finding it.
Right. You know, the fascia, um, signs are really effective, big R, dominoes, you know, they, they achieve.
Well, and Safeway, Safeway is the same thing, so.
Right, right, yeah, they, they achieve the same, the same thing, so.
Yeah, the dominoes, it's like, even though the dominoes, the building screams pizza. Right, like-
We're all trained.
There's wayfinding through so, and signage through so many different, like, design choices.
Absolutely.
Very true. Any comment from those online? Anybody wanna weigh in?
None from me.
Yeah, I, I have a couple of quick questions.
Please.
Yes or no, are existing signs grandfathered? Is there a table of conversion factors that relates lumens, candellas, and nits? Included in, in a table somewhere in the document? And when it comes to preserving the charm of our mining history, does gentrification include preserving the charm? Or does gentrification preclude preserving the charm? Those are my three questions.
I apologize, that, that was the wrong wording to use, and I didn't mean to open the can of worms. But no, I think all of us are trying to do everything we can to preserve the historic character of Leadville. Uh, our National Historic District, the Eastside Mining District, those monuments that we have coming into town, particularly on the south side, that, that currently sign our mining district heritage. I don't think anything we're doing or that we, anybody, anybody's considered is trying to negate that.
That sounds like Joey, and I have no doubt that you mean that, and as long as you're alive and functioning, it will be that way. Should there be a sentence somewhere in the executive summary at the beginning of the document that says that?
I think that's a great idea.
Well, and, and we could strengthen it, but it, we do speak to, um, design character. And it relates to what we call our, um, mountain aesthetic, I think.
Mountain rustic.
Mountain rustic, yeah. So we've tried to make sure that, you know, people understand that we wanted to relate to this place and not just anywhere in the US.
I think we've got it.
I think all three of those points are, are important points to have in our document.
Yeah. Yeah, so we could, we could strengthen that.
Current signage is grandfathered for existing buildings. If somebody, if somebody takes over the space, or, or they redevelop the space, then they have to come under current code, correct? But existing signage is grandfathered in the, in the new document. A chart comparing lumens and nits and candellas, I think makes perfect sense. And those are readily available, uh, to have as a guiding part of our document. And yes, we've addressed, uh, at the very beginning of the process, uh, staff addressed the aesthetic and characteristics of our signage to try to have it in keeping with Leadville's historic character, for lack of a better term. They read that earlier, we can reread it if you'd like.
Oh, I trust you.
Uh, but no, that's very important, thank you very much. Anybody else online? Uh, Jason, go right ahead.
Yeah, Joey, you had mentioned that, um, if there was change of, of ownership in that building, that it would then need to be, um,
Uh, a new- Yeah, for instance, just dominoes took over an existing pizza place, but a different company, and so therefore they had to bring their signage into compliance. Uh, that'd be the same thing if another company bought, uh, one of the current gas stations and redeveloped it under a different brand, then that would be brought under current, uh, sign.
So yeah, my, my question, and it, I, I just wanna make sure it's clear that if somebody were just taking over ownership of the existing business and not changing the business or the brand, that that sign could stay?
That is correct.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to be clear.
Nonconformities in our code, it says nonconformities can continue in perpetuity as long as you don't increase the degree of use or size of the nonconformity. So if you took over an existing building with an existing sign, now think, the one caveat to this that you need to think through is if they take over a business that the sign has become blighted or had, is, is not, is in disrepair, that was one of the other things that we wanted this code to be able to do was to address, um, signs that I know, I'll immediately think of examples, I think we've shared that before, of where that is true. So the only caveat to that is if we have a sign that's in disrepair.
Okay.
And that'd be, and that's a condition that talks to that.
If, if they were refurbishing that sign to the same original capacity, then it wouldn't, they could keep it as is.
I would say that if, um, for a nonconformity, um, and we, our code really only talks about, um, in the event of, of some kind of catastrophe to a occupant, occupied building. But to a sign, I would say that if they're gonna come in and they have a blighted sign, which activates a new application to put in a new sign, then they'll be subject to the codes. So I think that if you are, my interpretation of the way that we've written this is if you've purchased a building that had, a, a business that has signage, um, that you are just wanting to resurface, you would be able to, do we have that in there? I think that you would be able to apply for signs that were legally installed prior to, okay, so it's preexisting, um, alterations.
Does it continue?
They may- They will be altered, modified, or changed in any way that would increase their nonconformity. When such modifications or changes occur, occurs a sign, we go into compliance. So they cannot increase the degree of, of nonconformity, is basically it. And if they wanna change in any manner beyond what was existing, then they have to come in to get, to current load.
So just as an example, um, so Motel Six buys the roadway inn. They can resurface that thirty-five foot high sign that's currently there. I'm only guessing, I don't remember how high it is, but the, the big pole sign that's in front of that one, that is, that would not need new code. They could resurface that sign if they just.
As a holiday inn?
Right, as a, as a different company.
Right.
Yeah.
As long as they don't increase the size of that sign or the degree of, maybe it's elimination.
Right.
Maybe it's, so whatever the degree of increased use, that would trigger new-
But it's an existing sign and, and an existing use, and they could resurface and reuse that sign if they just-
As long as they didn't increase the degree of nonconformity.
But if somebody came in next door to that on an empty lot and built a new Motel Six, they would be required to have the eight foot monument sign.
Again, but there would still be needing to make sure that it, it needs the elimination or nits. And so you couldn't, you couldn't increase the degree of nonconformity. So it'd be a little bit trickier.
No, understood, and we're gonna run into those things, that's the only reason I was bringing that up. And, and there will be some signs that, that, uh, not everybody appreciates, that will be grandfathered and will continue to be used for the foreseeable future. That's the name of the game, I guess. Did that answer your question, Jason?
And there is something I-
Yeah, that, that was great, thank you, everyone.
I would say that you might wanna further, I don't have a code waiting for me, um, but, um, if, I, I think there's another, um, under nonconformities, there is an amount of the signage maybe that's been damaged, so if you're replacing up to a certain, um, amount, we might wanna just think about that too, looking at that. So that we're consistent with nonconformities throughout the code. The code talks universal a bit about nonconformity, nonconforming preexisting uses. And so there's also a variable depending on the percentage of the sign that might, might be in disrepair, so. You know, it does kind of, it does kind of question at what degree of condition the sign is in before we'd be able to consider that nonconforming situation.
Awesome.
Um, so this is a great topic. What about, um, like electronic signs? Since that's just a quick reformatting, like that takes two seconds, it doesn't take
Well, yeah.
Significant capital. Is that one of the things that we could change in terms of nonconformity? Like if right now somebody has a three second transition and active moving sign it, whatever.
That's interesting.
Images? That seems like the kind of thing that we shouldn't have to wait thirty years till a new owner or an upgrade to just change that. And is that something that we could build into our nonconformity section?
Sounds like a border county commissioner's question.
What, yeah, is it actually a well-known county commissioner decision to make? Um, your recommendation, you know, will help drive that-
That's a great idea.
Um, but we may wanna consider, um, you know, the idea of phasing out some preexisting, uh, nonconformities and run it past legal to make sure that we have a legal basis to be able to do that.
You got that? Yes. So we just, we just need to make sure that we don't run into any kind of-
No, that's an interesting idea, it would be interesting to see if that could be addressed.
But, but that could be a way to kind of phase out and, but we just need to make sure that we're not.
Yeah.
Being unfair.
Well, and do you guys wanna consider phasing out something when the business sells or redevelops?
Well, and, and I was thinking, all right, so if somebody buys the, the roadway inn, and they just keep it as a hotel. But if somebody buys the, whoever buys the, the, uh, place across the street, Millennium Towing, and redevelops that, then all signage is off. That's, that's a redevelopment, that's a plan, a, a brand new site plan and everything. So then, any existing signs there are not necessarily to be kept. But that's not, there's not a way to grandfather stuff if that whole site's been redeveloped.
You know, more often than not, the, the rebrandings that we've had are the gas stations in the last number of years, you can probably all think it's been come and go, stop and save. Stop and jump and, dive and chair rock and, so, you know, those are, those are the ones, our convenience stores seem to change over quite a bit as do Shopko, Big R, um, Alco, you know, those are kind of-
You have the big boxes.
So I think just kind of thinking about like, what are the, the, um, when does that happen? Are, are hotels, motels, that'd be another one that, um, change over, but, um.
Cause that's another thing we're gonna have to address sooner rather than later, some of those will change hands. And it'd be nice to have the answer in our back pocket when it happens, so it doesn't get missed.
The more, um, formula those businesses are, more, um, chain, uh, you know, they come with predetermined kind of marketing. Um, we ran into that with Domino's, you see dead with, um, you know, them um, being a franchise, having a franchise license and a franchise, and that, I mean, are a conservative, uh, signage, um, but, but they do find alternatives. You know, talk about keen with a huge speed of sound and dip, or run down conservative things.
No, no, there's a successful process.
Ryan has a question.
Ryan, please.
Yes, thanks, guys. Um, this is something that might not even be applicable, but just kind of forward thinking is all of these conversations we're having around this, would this also be applicable to things like, you know, parking decks if that ever happened in Leadville?
Parking decks, parking garage structures?
In, in what way, like, if you're not following you?
Uh, just some of the restrictions, um, that we've discussed, like this would ultimately apply to those cases.
So you're talking specifically about signage restrictions on?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Something like that? Yes, absolutely, they, they-
Okay.
This, this would incorporate any structure like that.
Got it, thank you.
Uh, any multi-story structure would be covered that way.
Got it, thank you.
No, good thinking. Anybody else online? Any other comments?
Yeah, I, I think what I'm hearing is that if Saturday lost twenty percent of their LEDs on their incredibly bright sign, they could repair it, they could fix it, but they can't redesign it. I think that's what I'm hearing.
That is how it's written now, or how we're intending to write it now. That's correct. It needs to be repaired, but, uh, replaced.
If a big heavy load misses the road and knocks down the roadway sign, um, I mean, is that a repair or is that a new sign that comes under new jurisdiction? Just, just a thought, you, you can think about that.
You're taking it.
Happens tomorrow, Eric, we'll, uh, look to you.
The, the, the last one is, um, the Forest Service used to give ninety-nine year leases on property and as those expire, uh, the private people are obliged to give up their ninety-nine year lease cause it expired. Could there be something that says, look, within the next thirty years? Or twenty-five or fifty years, um, everything's gotta be, has to meet code.
And you've already, you started to address that a minute ago.
In what way?
Uh, uh, about a time limit on current signs.
Well, we have a, well, time, a timeline on like abandoned signs, if, you know, a business closes and it's not re-immediately, yeah, we would need to, like in fourteen days, remove that sign.
Are we writing anything into code about future, as, as we try to become dark sky compliant?
Yeah.
Is there anything in there now that says that over ten or fifteen or twenty years, any current signage has to also be brought into compliance with dark sky?
No.
Thank you, you know, I think a better way to do it is to figure out some kind of incentive, um, to incentivize businesses. You know, I don't, I, I always like a carrot instead of a stick.
No, and that's great, it just, if, if there was a way to address that.
So I think that it could be a way or a fees, it could be, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, there could be some kind of way to incentivize local businesses to, you know, if, if, if local businesses added, and we've already dealt with this, um, some kind of lighting outside on their fascia, I mean, we had two different businesses do this. We immediately put them into code enforcement because those were added and they radiated out on Mountain View Drive and Highway twenty-four. So we immediately went into enforcement on those. But I think that if we've got some kind of less than desirable signage, I would love to think of ways that we could incentivize them in a meaningful way, um, to come into compliance.
With grant funding or something.
Grant funding, waiver, I don't know, something, I kinda like ideas.
We could certainly start with waivers, and then maybe look in, some type of grant funding for that. Maybe eventually, one of these days, the Urban Renewal Board will have funds available for that kind of thing.
No, that would be amazing.
It's, and that's kind of what it's about, at least for the central court. So no, that's a great idea.
You could deduct, you could deduct a portion of the cost of their sign off their property taxes, is that an option? For one, one year or something? If they were to bring a, a grandfathered sign that is considered a problem up to current standards? Maybe you could give them a carrot that way?
I love this, we have to run it through, um, you know, some of these kind of ideas of creating incentives through
through our, our-
Don't, don't mess with taxes, it's sort of, yeah, do it some other way.
Yeah, but, but, but I think we could find some creative ways maybe to look for, um, supporting our, um-
supporting our small businesses, local small businesses and to gain in compliance. But I think we could kind of think through maybe that. It'd be amazing if there was a through the Little Community Fund or.
Well, that was where I first went, was the Community Fund.
Or something.
Just, you know, one of their small.
Projects.
You know, one of those small two thousand dollar things is earmarked for. Psych, the, the county signage.
Well, the ADC.
Are you using?
ADC, ADC would be.
Well, ADC or the, or, yeah, any of these things are, it's what they're about. That's what they're for.
That's right. So, you know, maybe maybe it's creating, but wouldn't that be wonderful? Yeah, I'm sure we can all think of. And and this is why the sign code is being redone. A, it was terrible and contradicted itself. And it would tell you absolutely do one thing, and then when you went to that section of the code, it would tell you something really different. So, but but, you know, we were trying to have some design standards and look at more compatibility as we are wayfinding different, differently than we ever have here. So a way to embrace our seen qualities and find opportunities for better, for usable, consistent code.
As everybody knows, I advocated for eliminating pole signs. Are there any other thoughts or comments or criticisms of that? Just in trying to guide the planning department? I like that idea.
Just sort of riffing on what Commissioner Thurgood said before, who doesn't find target by that low sign?
Right.
You know, I know where it turns, I see that.
No, and and if it's done consistently, then it's not an issue. It's only if it's inconsistent that it becomes an issue. But are there any other, anybody online, any commissioners that have a problem with moving in that direction?
To be double down a bit and just ask you a quick question. If you are a business owner at the junction of eighty-two and twenty-four, when the wind, where the Windmore cabins are, you can picture that, and you have a sixty-five mile an hour speed limit, and let's say where the Balltown Lounge used to be.
Across the street, right?
Would you feel as though you were, had a fair opportunity to advertise your business with an eight-foot monument sign?
Yes. Especially with the new roundabout that's coming through.
I think that's a great test. That's probably where our speed limit is the greatest, where we might have a little bit of funky line of sight or limited, limited line of sight. So maybe that's a really great test. And if that location feels like it would have adequate signage, then I think that's a really great example of where else, I mean, that's, if you needed a pole sign up, is the one location I can think of immediately that might challenge that ideal. But if we're adequately giving that with a monument sign.
The roundabout being developed at that intersection. Is it gonna be a true roundabout? It it's not a sixty-five mile an hour roundabout.
No, it's, it's all designed for traffic calming. I have it, you know, they did a letter just to, as part of their MIPA study with all of the property owners there, but I haven't actually seen the full design to know about. But yes, they've got to have some, I mean, roundabouts.
I saw one of the initial designs, and it is truly a roundabout. But that being the case, the monument signs would be ideal.
Yeah, I mean, because I'm trying to think wherever, where else in the county or what other industry would be, would might feel conversed to what we're saying. And so I'm just trying to kind of think where else would someone think that they had been limited in their advertising ability of their small business? And it, it seems as though it's not overly.
You already have precedents for the college. You already have precedents for the airport. You already have precedents for the hospital. Everybody's already on me.
And I would. Sorry, is someone else speaking?
No, go ahead, Jason.
I, I would also argue that locals, once they know the signs are there and where buildings are at, they probably tend to be the ones driving faster through those areas. Whereas people that are unfamiliar with the area tend to slow down to read those signs or look at those signs. Yeah, and and they do have a sixty-five mile an hour roundabout. It's just north of Breck on Highway Nine. I've seen them fly through there, right over the middle of the roundabout.
Landed in a river at that one. Yeah, no, and everything, everything town adjacent is already at a pretty, pretty restricted speed limit anyway. So you're really, that's our only other high-speed approach. But since they're doing the roundabout, you've already addressed it.
So.
Potentially.
You know, maybe pole signs are.
Thing of the past.
Yeah. I don't know.
We were, we were limiting them to twelve feet anyway, and the monument sign is eight feet. Not a, it's not a, we're not cutting anything in half. This is changing by a third. That's great. That's how I'd go forward.
All right, we'll bring it back that way and see, see how that goes.
Yep, no.
Great discussion.
No other ideas from any other members of the planning commission contrary to that thought? That gives Melissa guidance.
Go ahead, Eric.
Just, just a thought. There, there are some interstate precedents. There's a standard signage that comes in two parts for lodging fuel and food. And once you take the exit, there's typically a second sign that says turn left, turn right. Other precedent, I think we already have a blue sign that says hospital that way. There may be one that says library that way. I don't know if that fits with what you're doing or not. It's just a thought.
Those signs are exempt from our sign code.
And those are typically state signs.
Yeah, anything that's Todd's Transit Oriented Directional Signs or hospital governmental C dot, those kind of things are exempt. I don't think that's incorrect. So those are, those aren't signs that we'd be looking to regulate.
But we could approach the state about adding those types of signs in certain areas if we chose to.
Oh, adding, yeah, additional if we.
If I, if I understood the comment correctly.
And and those Todd's, like, businesses can apply to the state for those, and they have very stringent advertising guidelines. They really only will consider directional kind of things and.
Yeah, they're really kind of.
But they, we, we would, we would take exception to whatever those state doing these things are allowable.
Yeah, listed a couple places.
No, that's a lot of work. Thank you very much. One comment. Do we anywhere address future technologies? I'm just wondering, well, like, three D holographs, what are, maybe we just say that, oh, they'll be evaluated on a case-by-case basis so that we don't preclude them if they're okay, but that we don't also inadvertently allow something because it doesn't. All within certain areas. That's right. The monument signs only, you saw, but the hologram that rejects is thirty-five feet down the ground, sure. I mean, who knows? It's, it's an interesting point. I could see where we could regulate it by our elimination guidelines, but yeah, future technology. Maybe, yeah, maybe that's the right way to do it, will be.
I would suggest thinking about maybe the findings associated with the code amendment, and there's always an opportunity to add in new things that become industry standards, but I think it's hard to create code around future uses that we don't have very well defined or understand the nature or impact of. And and so you may want to come with a baseline that you could, you can always add those in as those maybe become more industry standard and you, you understand what are the items that you want to mitigate around those. It could just a thought that you might want to, sometimes. You know, it's been our experience a little bit in creating code, motionless is. That sometimes when you're trying to create code for all the what-if or future things, we can get, we can miss it because we just don't have enough information yet. And so sometimes it's really good to keep that in mind. But but wait till we kind of have that happening, and then how do we react to it? Because it takes us thirty days to invent codes. We can react very quickly.
So your suggestion is not to put a what-if, but just to leave it to current and address it as it comes?
That's kind of my recommendation, but but Melissa, you have to.
All right, I think, I think that's true. I, you might also be getting, yeah, something that was nagging me a little bit in terms of just a little wiggle room. Or just some, something that comes up that, wow, that's, that would really be okay, and it doesn't quite match. You know, and how do we, how do we want to handle those as they come up?
We can always, you know, we can always bump up an administrative decision, and so we might just verbalize that. I mean, that's always, that's always an option for staff. But maybe we verbalize it in this code a little bit because if we got one of those very unique situations where we think that it's, maybe this is okay, but our code is a little restricted. That we allow that to be elevated into alternative methods or something.
On the condition, yeah.
And you've addressed some of those future uses, like motion on, on our electronic signs. Some of those things have already been addressed. That could be applied to future technology. That's an excellent question.
Yeah, we can, uh, make sure we have a little wiggle room. Again, that so that somebody says, well, you, you, you know, here's the escape door, we get to abuse that and so on.
Interesting.
Yeah, we can put a few rails on it, but something that we could be able to bump things up.
Eric, did you have another question?
Yeah, case by case is fine. Could there be a sentence after that that says, if it isn't already somewhere else? The option of adding an amendment, like an amendment to the United States Constitution, or something that really kicks in and becomes very popular and very functional?
Well, that's the basis of a code amendment, I would say. I mean, if you, if you're, if you're finding those kind of findings, then I think it's time for your planning staff to come in and say it's time to amend code. So I, I, I kind of don't like, he's like, he's like, a code that's a little bit easier to, than this. But, but I, we can create, try to look for a little bit of wiggle room.
I think what Anne is saying is if we can keep the code relatively specific, then we're keeping future applicants to stay within the code, so they're not trying to stretch the rules. And then if we find a new technology that is absolutely stretching the rules, then we come back with a code amendment and, and change it in the future. But for now, leave the rules cut and dry enough that this is what you can do. Choose one of these options. These are your only options.
And, you know, we were just talking about this today. You know, sometimes you have to administer a code for a while to find out are there unintended consequences to it. And you go in with your rationale behind doing it and the intention behind the code. Administer it for a while, and then does it need a little tweaking? That's why we come up to that country just a little bit, so.
The massive blind spot we all missed.
Yeah, you know, and, and our code is a living document that we can come in and talk about those kinds of things.
Thank you, Eric. That was, those were excellent comments and good things to consider. Any other? Anything else for you, Melissa?
I think that covers it. Thank you.
That covers it. Any other comments on sign code regulations before we wrap up tonight, everybody?
Done here.
If we have no further comment, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Jason. Hey, Jason. Would you like to second? I'll second, yes. Very good. All right. Thanks, everybody. It was a good conversation tonight.
It was a marathon. Thank you for your service.
Our February twenty-fourth meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.